Good morning. We will call the November 7th, 2014 County Commission Meeting to order. We stand for a moment of silent reflection, pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Davis.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next order of business is to review and approve the agenda. Does anyone have any changes they wish to make to the agenda? Hearing none, those in favor, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hennies, Commission Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses the consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of October 21st, 2014. Approval of the vouchers in the amount of $126,691.11. To declare surplus, two UTVs as presented as surplus for the purpose of trade by the Sheriff's Office. To declare surplus, two 15 Glock Duty weapons for the purpose of trade as presented by the Sheriff's Office. Number nine is to declare surplus, five M-26 tasers and their peripheral equipment as presented for the purpose of donation by the Sheriff's Office. And finally, number 10 is approval of the web accessibility policy as submitted by information technology.
Does anyone wish any of the items on the consent agenda removed? If not, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is item 11A, Jolly Lane Speed Limit.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Wilsley, Highway Department. I have submitted to you an application to raise the speed limit on Jolly Lane between Twilight Drive and Highway 44. We have, we did a traffic survey of it, and the 85th percentile on this was 37.4 miles per hour, and over 90% of the people are exceeding the 25 mile per hour speed limit. We, in looking back, we have that over 90% speeding for the last four or five traffic counts that we did. We feel that the 25 is just kind of creating a speed trap, and it's wide open and it's easy to see. So, we are recommending that you, that we approve the change to 35 mile per hour, and asking for the Chairman's signature on the resolution, so stating.
Okay, and I would point out, in case someone is referring to the memo that was in the packet, the typographical correction in the last paragraph, changing the 40 miles an hour to 35 miles an hour, the figure is correct in the copy of the resolution itself. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I have just a couple of questions.
Yes.
As you go down Jolly Lane from Highway 44 South, do you ever anticipate changing that, and then also going north from Twilight? Because maybe Twilight almost...
Twilight, north from Twilight, it pretty much dead-ends after about a block.
It turns, though.
Yeah, it turns, and it's kind of a...
And I just...
No, I don't anticipate that.
Okay, because I observe, since I use that street quite a bit, that, you know, going south from 44, the road is not in good enough condition.
No, it's pretty much...
Not our responsibility, but, but going north of Twilight, people do just be right on around that corner, and I'm curious if we should just do all of it on that side, at least going north.
I don't intend, for going north, I don't know what the plans are for there.
Okay.
I really don't have any plans for that. I'm not even, I'm not 100% sure where the city's limits line is in that area.
Yeah, I don't know that for sure either.
I'd have to look on my map to see.
Yeah, they've kind of...
They kind of meandered around in that area.
That's difficult out there.
Yeah.
Okay, I just was curious, because I've seen...
Yes.
Both sides, but I really don't think it should be going south, nor it's me. Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
I'd move to approve the adjustment in the speed limit on Jolly Lane between Highway 44 and Twilight Drive to 35 miles an hour.
Do you wish to include the Chair's signature on the resolution? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Just one, Mr. Chairman. Would this work the same out on the interstate highway, I wonder?
Pardon?
Would this work the same on the interstate? Because I go about 75, 78, and most people pass me. So, I think I'm going to ask the state to raise it to 80, 85. Bad rationale, I think, but I'm in favor of it, but it makes, I don't know.
Any other comments? Hearing none, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, our next item is item 12A, Canvas of the General Election Results.
Good morning, everyone. Julie Pearson, Pennington County Auditor. I'm going to need a stepstool, I think. It's a little high for me. What you have in front of you, no, you don't, is the Certificate of Canvas for the results for November 4th. The information attached to this, you can peruse when you sign it, but that's the official canvas that needs to go into the state. I have, I started out with it anyway, a summary for the Board, and of course, that's posted, everybody knows, on the state's website, and eventually we'll get on ours. We had 34,004 votes. So, I need a motion to approve the canvas and the authorized signatures to the official Certificate of Canvas, as well as approve all the election bills, election-related bills.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Just a question. Did you have any problems with the, at the election?
No, actually, no. We, the new scanners, we found out, are much more particular in kicking out hesitation marks, and we had a jam up on absentees and not knowing the effective description of batch. According to the scanners, we, we scanned them, we were short the number of ballots because we had jammed up ballots, and what we understood the word "batch" meant to what it actually means to the scanner, we should have re-scanned back to a certain point, and we didn't. So, we ended up recounting absentees, which took us a while, and we actually had to reconstruct 224 ballots because of election ballot stamps were in the wrong place, which is precinct workers' problem, so we're going to put a box on the ballots from now on. So, we were late. We weren't as late as Minnehaha. They were 9 o'clock. It was the exact same problem from them. The 8:50 scanners are so much more particular, and it kicks out a hesitation mark, which by law, we don't have to kick out. We discovered it early on in the process. Bob never did. So, that's why they reconstructed so many. But there's a way to change that, so it were fitting within the statute. So, the scanners worked very well, once, once we get the language and the parameters set for what it reads.
Was this the first election you'd use those new scanners?
Yes. Yes, we did not use them in June, so...
Minnehaha County was still counting ballots?
They got done at 9 o'clock the next morning.
Yeah, Wednesday morning.
They reconstructed 400 and some, but they only had four teams. We had 10 teams reconstructing because we realized that we were going to have a problem, and so we just called in more teams, and he just chose not to, but we got home probably about 1:00. We were expecting to get done at 11:00, the recount of the absentees by the time we finally decided what to do, after we'd looked through all the absentee ballot applications to make sure that wasn't where we were short. We weren't even counting absentees or regular ballots until 9:00. So, that was the two-hour delay that we, that we were, but they counted after that, you know, and it's just, it's just what you do. So, we're very confident that, that our numbers are, are solid.
Thank you. Any other comments? We need to keep talking for about three more minutes in order to meet the agenda, but...
I need everybody's signature on that, and if you give it to Lori at the end.
Commissioner Davis has it in front of him. I would ask a question, and maybe you do or don't have the numbers, but in terms of previous elections versus this election, has the number of early voters increased?
No. Actually, the, we compare this election to 2010. We don't compare it to 2012. That's a presidential year. In 2010, we had 10,500 and some odd early votes. We only ended up with 9,004, actually, only 9,000 on, on this election, and the turnout, the, the process was slower. We were only running at about 50% till about two weeks out, so we voted over 4,500 people in the last two weeks. They were later than usual, and so our number is 1,500 less. We still contend early votes are a very good indication and a very good tell for winners, frankly, as well as turnout at the polls. The polls in 2010, or the, yes, the election day polls at 2010 were 60%, and we ended up at 52. So, they still are quite a tell. Up until that point, when, when we took away the reason on absentee, and they basically turned into early voting for the 46 days, which is what's required for military, so we offer it to all of our voters, we saw absentee or early voting increase from about a 10% to about 25, and that's right where it, where it hangs in of total voter turnout, not of voter registration. So, we, we were estimating about 8,500 early votes. As we got through the process, we ended up with the 9,000, and we thought 50% turnout, and we ended up with 52. So, we're right on our, our projections, but I, they, they change during the process, so we just didn't get the voter turnout that we thought we should.
Thank you. Now, do, we need to pass a motion to...
Yes, to approve signatures and accept the official canvas, send it to the state, and approve election-related expenses, which are for rentals, cell phones, mileage, and salaries.
Do we have such a motion? So, move. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I will leave the, the summary just right over here for anybody who wants to make copies.
Okay, and then if you're ready to move into item B?
Yes, the supplement for the general fund supplemental hearing, public hearing for the home detention budget. The hearing has been posted for 9:15 this morning, and it is a request from law enforcement to support an under-budget of $200,000 for the home detention budget. I believe Sheriff Tome has talked to the Board about this on previous occasions, as well as a letter is attached for the reading for here, and he is here. And though, at this point in time, we have to list that it is from unassigned fund balance. According to his notations, he projects he will have that in unspent budget and overcollected revenues at the end of the year. Regardless of, of that fact, this supplement will reduce general fund reserves from 25.93 at the end of the year to 25.56. So, it does, does affect it very little, a half, less than half a percent. And Sheriff Tome is here for any question.
Julie, if he has those underspent and overcollected funds at the end of the year, that'll go back into the, impact the reserves and...
Yes, it, it goes into the black hole, as legislators call it. It goes in to support our reserves, but we've done a lot of, you know, we do estimates of what that will be, and when you see the rest of the supplemental requests come in, we'll also be able to project what they are by the end of the year. We have some, some large overcollected revenues this year. Pilk came in about a half a million more. Bank Franchise was about $300,000 more, and those are just general estimated revenues, not anything to do with law enforcement.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Kevin Tome, Painty County Sheriff. If you remember, over the last year, 18 months, we've transitioned from secure detention to what we call JDAI, Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative. This is part of that continued transition, and as we move from secure to alternatives, it's been a little bit of a moving target over the last year, 18 months. This will fix us for this year. We think we have it fixed in the 2015 budget. We won't need to do a supplement, and like Julie stated, we estimate we're going to have at least $500,000, probably closer to $600,000 still left in that budget, even after we do the supplement. We're asking for a supplement at $200,000. We think it'll probably be closer to 180, but didn't want to come back and ask for a second supplement between now and the end of the year. And it's, the JDI has been a good thing, less kids on the secure side, more kids in alternatives, and this largely is to, goes to our contract with Lutheran Social Services. They're our partner running the Arise Center, Reception Center side of it, and they got some good news as well. They're going to be moving into the larger part of our staff secure that's currently vacant. They got a grant for runaway and homeless youth for the next three years, and it's a, it's a gap in services that exists in our community today, so we're using more of that facility and expanding our partnership with Lutheran Social Services.
Any other questions or comments? Anyone have any questions? If not, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the general fund home detention budget supplement in the amount of $200,000 from unassigned fund balance.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Okay, the next item is item 13, Executive Session. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd move to go into executive session for personnel issue and contractual
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second to convene in the executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do we have a motion to come out of executive session?
So much.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, items from the Chair. I have none at this point in time. Committee reports?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chair.
Well, Mr. Chair, just to, to let you know, we, last night, we hosted Leadership Rapid City here in the courthouse, took them on a tour, and next Thursday morning, the Chamber of Commerce will be using this meeting room for their monthly meeting. So, and another thing that I guess I was really impressed with is we were using our Emergency Operations Center. We have had a lot of usage in just the last three weeks, and there's a lot of demand for it, and so I guess I just want to say that it kind of makes me feel better as part of the building committee to know that we're using the building and people are wanting to use it, and that's what we, one of our goals was, so.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chair, last week, Donna and the Ellsworth Task Force met at the base with Senator Inhofe from Oklahoma, and he was talking about base closures and things in that order, and he was here, he's the ranking member of the military, what's the other word I want to use, Donna, Nancy?
Affairs?
Affairs, yeah. And so, we had a lot of discussion about Ellsworth, and since then, we have had a gentleman here, Dan Adelstein, who happens to be the son of Stan Adelstein, is a retired Special Forces Lieutenant Colonel and so on and so forth, but he works for Senator Jim Toomey in Pennsylvania, and he was here this last week talking about veterans things, and several of us met with him. He took a lot of ideas back to Pennsylvania on things that are happening here and across the nation with the veterans programs, so, that's it.
Commissioner Vasquez, any committee reports?
Oh, not, no, I don't. I'll be going to PIER middle of next week to a South Dakota Assurance Alliance meeting again. They're changing our, how they're going to operate with our liability insurance, so I'm on a committee there. I will let you know the results of that as soon as there are any.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Should we say anything about the task force? You know, I have been working for a year and a half on changing how egg classification for tax purposes works for smaller properties, and the egg tax classification force, or task force, I kind of have that mixed up, has been reviewing that July, September, and this month, they're actually looking at some proposals of some law changes to be presented. I know I'll, I'll be going, I think Jay is going down on the 18th, which is our next commission meeting, but that's when the task force is, is going forward, and we are talking to them, working with the, the folks that have been on the committee and right beside us all the way, so we, we're all giving our ideas, but we are making some progress, and then we'll see what happens as far as the presentation to the state legislature in 2015.
Mr. Chair, I do have one other thing that I'd like to bring up. Over the last number of years, I've been representing the county at the Veterans Day Parade and had my pickup with the county signs and things on it, much to the chastization that I've had over the years of honoring our veterans, but I'm not going to be here this year for that parade, and I would suggest, if any is at all possible, somebody else represent the county in that parade.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, the next item on the agenda is the items from the public. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to address the commission on any subject? If not, then we go to item 17. And Commissioner Krautman, you brought this issue, so I'll turn it over to you.
I received a phone call, and I've had some conversations with some folks who are concerned about some terminology in our, both in our original, which is the current vacation home rental ordinance, and the one that will be approved in four days with some changes. And it has to do with transfers of ownership. We haven't changed the phraseology in either the original or the upcoming change, but there are some concerns, and, and it just seemed like if we could hear those concerns, that, that maybe we should look at whether or not we do have an issue. We can't, we aren't going to change where we're going with the current update that will be soon, will be soon legal, I guess is the word I'm looking for, but the, I, I just think we need to understand what transfers of ownership means, and so the folks that have concerns, if they would come forward and talk about those concerns, and then I have asked Jay Elderman to be here, and I was looking for Donna Meyer from Register of Deeds. Is she, okay, so, and PJ's here, so I would like to have some discussion on, on that concern, so, and Rita and I, I believe Cory maybe has one.
Hi, my name is Rita Chapman, and thank you for putting me on the agenda today. As Nancy was saying, it's been brought to our attention that there's not a clear understanding of the wording when it comes to transfer or sale of property, and it was mainly transfer. I've been told by PJ, the Planning and Zoning Office, and correct me if I'm wrong, PJ, that if either my husband or I have our name removed from the title, whether by death or any other reason, our VHR permit to run a vacation home rental and suburban residential, which is a legal permit now, will be revoked. So, both our names are on the titles, both our names are on the permits, but if we do any legal change whatsoever, either through any legal change, whether we do it because we're doing a, as I said, a death, or this in particular, we're thinking, or a legal change because we decide to go to an LLC, or we decide to do some, anything like that, our property gets revoked, our permits, so. Is that correct? Do I have that right? So, anyway, we're here to get clarification on this, because of this concern of mine, and do you have any questions? Did I make that clear?
And you're assuming that you could not reapply if something happened to your husband, then you could not reapply?
Right, because it's suburban residential, you cannot reapply.
Okay.
And that's, we, we understood that going into this, we just didn't realize that a transfer happened when something happened with one of us. So, it just doesn't, I'm, this is how it directly affects me. There are ramifications throughout the whole county. If somebody owns a vacation home in an SRD that's unmarried and decides to get married, if someone, as I said, goes into an LLC, decides to change the legal definition of their business, then it, it affects that all the way around. So, it's the same people running the same property, just a change in the title.
Okay. Was there anyone else who want, who had some concerns to bring forward? Okay.
I want to add real quick, too. Sometimes we make legal and financial decisions, too, that would maybe make the change, and that's, that was part of it also. It kind of affects our future planning.
Hi, Cory Tomovic. I was on the committee with Rita, and I guess our, our situation is similar in that my name is on this, both, on the CUP of a property that is in... is on this, both, on the CUP of a property that is in suburban residential, it's surrounded by general ag, but it's, if it's, something happens to Ken, or Ken wants to transfer that property, he owns it, but my name's on the conditional use permit. We, at this point, can't do that, even though we would be, I would be running the operation, so I'd have to reapply. And in suburban residential, I'm not allowed to do that. So, it's kind of similar, but it's a little bit different because my name is not on the property at this point. So, I don't know. I guess when we, I was on the committee, it wasn't, it was never my intent, or I don't think it was the intent of the committee, and I'm just speaking for myself here, to harm anyone that is running it in a professional manner according to all of the conditional use permit regulations and the state lodging license. And so, it is, it seems to be a dilemma. So, I fully expect that the commissioners will do this properly. And also, the long-term, just making sure that it's okay. And plus, I don't think there's been any problems with VHRs. Have there been any complaints on any VHR in any zoning district? So, there you go. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm wondering if our State's Attorney would have any words of wisdom for us, or some ideas, or what's your thoughts, Jay?
Jay Alderman with the State's Attorney's Office. Some of the comments that were made here bring up a lot of different scenarios. And when you talk about transfers of interest or estates and real property, I could start talking and not stop for several hours on all the different scenarios you could get into. But transfer is a pretty broad term, and anytime you want to grant, give, convey, sell to another to transfer an interest, that's a transfer. That's a very broad definition, but to not belay it anymore, it's just, almost everything you do is a transfer when you're putting it from one name to another, from a corporation to a person, from a person to a corporation, from myself to a spouse or to a child. Those are all forms of transfer. Some of the things that I'm not sure the law really looks at as a transfer is a common, like joint tenancy with right of survivorship. There's an example that kind of fits in, I think, one of the scenarios that was discussed here. In that particular case, I'm not sure that the law really looks at if one of the spouses will say, and that's really called a joint tenancy by the entiries is the technical legal term, or there's just a joint tenancy with right of survivorship. In either one of those scenarios, if the one joint tenant passes away, the other has the full ownership by that right of survivorship. It's not necessarily, and this is something that I'd have to talk to the Register of Deeds and maybe do a little more research on, but as I stand here, I don't think that that's really considered a transfer. What really happens there is that the surviving spouse is no longer subject to the claim of the decedent, or the spouse that passed away. They simply, both of them at the same time initially owned the whole, so it isn't like I'm getting anything I didn't already have, I'm just no longer subject to the claim of the spouse that passed away. And in that regard, I'm not sure that that's really considered a transfer. It's a highly technical definition I'm giving just now. But I guess my point of saying those kinds of things is that there are exceptions, it's a very broad definition, and I, you know, I'm willing to talk with the Register of Deeds and see what her experience and knowledge is on what they consider transfers. And I, if you would want me to, I can come back with some maybe suggestions if you're inclined to want to consider some exceptions in the definition of transfer. Like, the one I just gave isn't necessarily an exception, I think that might just be the law. But if you want some exceptions to the more strict interpretation of transfer outside of the scenario I just discussed, then that would, that would require down the road an amendment to the current ordinance to put in an actual definition that maybe accepts out some scenarios that you're comfortable with. That's, that's what I would be willing to do, but I'd have to have that kind of direction from you in order to know how I were, would go about drafting that definition.
Yes.
The intent that the board had, I think, when we passed this ordinance, was that we wanted to limit the number of vacation, vacation home rentals in suburban residential districts, and that those that were already in existence, we were going to allow them to stay as long as they didn't change ownership. Isn't that kind of what it was?
Yep.
So, having that, having said that, then, when, when some of the scenarios that have been laid before us this morning, as long as the ownership doesn't change, I mean, the, it might be an LLC, or it might be a corporation, or one of the spouses might have died, or, but, but one party of the operation is still the original owner of the property, then it would seem like that's the direction we ought to try to figure out how to, how to keep that in play. Because that's what, that's what was decided, I think, at the time.
I think that there was, you know, there was a reference to what if we, we want our daughter to inherit, or what if we want to, maybe I'm a single parent and I want to have a life estate with the remainder and a child, and so that's a new deed you draw up, that will end up being a different, that'll be a transfer. I mean, it just, it is, by law, that's a transfer. That's different than the scenario I gave on the joint tenancy. So, I guess the question become, if it's a transfer that results in a child being the new transferee, the new grantee, is, is that a type of transfer that you want to protect and not have it kick a vacation home out? Or is it just a bright line, and that a transfer is a transfer regardless if it's to a child or not? That's what our intent is.
My recollection of the whole discussion about vacation home rentals and conditional use permits in, in the suburban residential district was, we were going to grandfather these in, and eventually, they would all go away.
Yes.
So, I guess in the scenario where you're talking about the people that own the vacation rental homes now, once they die, then the vacation rental home goes away. I think that's what the intent was. Now, I don't know that I necessarily agree with that, but I think that's what the intent was.
What kind of direction would you prefer to have relative to moving forward?
Well, the one thing I guess I can do, just period, is talk to Donna, the Register of Deeds, and try to get a handle on, on what from her office and what she believes legally they have to consider as a transfer, because that's where the deeds come in and get recorded. So, it would be wise of me to have that conversation with our Register of Deeds. I could come back in a couple of weeks and, and maybe give you some ideas of what we, we don't think is technically a transfer, and that might help clear up some of the concern or anxiety over what might happen. But if you wanted me to, if there was a, a transfer that you wanted me to write a definition for that wouldn't kick suburban residential out, I'd have to have that direction from you, and maybe that's a topic for two weeks from now.
Mr. Chair, I would rather see us start with that definition of transfer, because I think there, there is some concern about the definition from that department as opposed to maybe what we thought we were doing in the ordinance. And we kind of need to understand that before we can really go forward to say, write this definition, make this change, are we going to change the ordinance? I mean, we just have to get the information first and get that figured out.
So, I can make that effort, have those communications, and report back to you in a couple of weeks.
Or maybe December.
Oh, yeah, that's right, I won't be here in two weeks. And then go from there. If the outcome of that discussion doesn't satisfy you that there's some areas you'd still like to change by actually incorporating a definition into the ordinance, then you could give me direction at that time as where you want me to go with that. So, I'll bring back some just information for you in December.
Any other comments? The, just so everyone understands, that any changes would trigger the whole process of amending the ordinance again. And if anyone's addicted to the subject, at least you'll be able to continue to indulge yourselves if we do have to. Maybe that's not fair, but.
Joyce Shigru, my comment doesn't have to do with the definition itself, but it's procedural. I had 25 years of experience working with administrative rules and regulations, and I smiled when Jay said what, the what-if question, because the what-if questions come before you all the time, and it's hard to figure out what's real and what is not. This sounds like a very legitimate question. But what we did so that we didn't have our ordinance in a state of flux all of the time, because then no one knew what the real ordinance was, was we definitely looked, we had rules and regulations, in this state, they're called administrative rules. We revised them periodically, always. So, we had a suspense file. If something came up and it had not been a real situation, which apparently this has not been for two years, or it would have come up before, because it's the same language we had in the original ordinance, is we knew what we wanted to do. If it came up as real, we figured out a way to accommodate that, but we put it in a suspense file. So, in, say, six months, then we did several revisions at the same time. It saved us a lot of money because we didn't have to publish over and over and over again as things came up. And the what-if questions are, just plague you all the time. So, that's just a procedural suggestion. If you don't, if planning and zoning doesn't do that now, you know, have a suspense file. It's not real to this point because it hasn't come up for the last two years, or we would already have been confronted with it. You know, don't move too fast, maybe suspend it, then when you have other ordinance changes come up, then do it. That's my suggestion.
Thank you. Any other comments? If there are no other comments, we will move on to item 18. Oops, excuse me.
I appreciate Joyce's information on that, and I somewhat agree with it, a file where you do all the changes at once. But I do say that sometimes things happen unexpectedly, and it's better to address something maybe more immediately than to, especially with me, since my husband, bless his soul, is a little older, you never know when something's going to come up. And I hate, I hate to think that my livelihood is in flux and in question while we're trying to figure out legality details of the wording. And so, I'm just kind of saying, it gives us security, peace of mind, to address things on this type of level, a little sooner than later. And also, I hadn't seriously thought about changing some of our legal things, like an LLC or stuff like that. I'm not really super good at that, and, but it is something that we're looking at addressing. And so, I want to make sure that before we do procedures that cost us money or send us in a direction that's going to jeopardize our livelihood, we want to make sure that we're on solid footing going into the processes. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, item 18, planning and zoning.
Good morning, PJ Conover, Director of Planning Department. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for the planning and zoning contains the following items. Item A, second reading of REZONE 1409 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1407 for Harney Mountain LLC, Jim Schala as the applicant, and approval is recommended. Item B, second reading of REZONE 1410 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1408 for Harney Mountain LLC and Jim Schala as the applicant, and approval is recommended. Item C, Plan Unit Development Review 0607, Black Hills Resort Incorporated to Simron Park, requested be continued to the January 20th Board of Commission meeting. Item D, Minor Platte 1428 and Subdivision Regulation Variance 1413 for Josiah Frank and Pamela Frank, life estate, Davis Engineering as agent, and approval is recommended with waivers. Item E, Plan Unit Development Review 0509 for Richard Sturkle, and approval is recommended.
Does anyone wish any of the items in the consent agenda removed? If not, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the consent agenda for planning and zoning as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item F.
Item F is a vacation of section line request 1403 for Neil Cheddar with the agent of Fisk Land Surveying. The existing residential, the existing land use is residential, and the current zoning is suburban residential. Physical characteristics of the properties in question are steep, wooded, and sloped. They're asked, they basically have asked to vacate 1,500 feet of section line highway, a proposed section line highway. They were required to get 375 signatures on a petition for this vacation. That petition was approved by the Auditor's Department on October 2nd of this year. There are a number of lots that are affected, but only two owners involved in this. It is Neil Cheddar and Richard Howard. Neil Cheddar owns lot, I'll go to the next one, owns lot eight, nine, 10, 19, and 20, and Mr. Howard owns lot 11. All the lots have existing access. All the lots also have platted easements for access in utilities. And those existing accesses and easements would remain in effect with this vacation of plat, a vacation of section line. This request was routed through the interdepartmental review, and one item came back of note from Black Hills Corporation, where they indicated that they do have utilities, and it's up on the screen, the darker lines, they do have utilities in the area, and they would approve of this vacation if easements would be granted. Through a conversation with their agent, Janelle Frank of Fisk Land Surveying, she has assured me that both landowners, Mr. Cheddar and Mr. Howard, would be willing and are willing to work and have worked with Black Hills' power to allow those easements if needed. Staff recommends approval of vacation of section line 1403 with two conditions.
Okay, any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to uphold staff recommendation.
For what?
For the approval of, of the vacation of section line 1403 with two conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further comments? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item G.
Good morning, Brittany Molliter, Water Protection Coordinator. Item G is the Spring Creek Watershed Management Project Implementation Plan Update. Item G is the Spring Creek Watershed Management Project Implementation Plan Update. At the October 29th, 2014 Spring Creek Advisory Group meeting, a recommendation was made to move funding from one project goal to another within Task 1 and Task 2. And these are just recommendations at this time, so no action can be taken today. So I'll read those recommendations from the advisory group, and then there are a couple of recommendations from staff. So the changes are 24,557 of Clean Water State Revolving Funds, or SRF funds, from Task 1E Dam and Link Improvement Project to Task 1A Riparian and Stream Bank Improvement Projects. 35,000 of SRF funds from Task 1D, which are forested stormwater projects, to Task 1B, which are stormwater projects. And 4,000 of 319 funds from Task 1A, which are riparian and stream bank projects, to Task 2 On-Site Waste Water Treatment System Improvements. And then staff are recommending the following changes, $1,008 of 319 funds from Task 1A Riparian Stream Bank Project to Task 1C Manure Grazing Management Projects. And $815 of 319 funds from Task 4 to Task 3C Administration to cover expenses incurred by respec outside their scope of work. They had paid for a couple of mailings to the property owners through an outside agency that typically we paid for. So, those are the recommendations, and at this time, I will bring them forward at the next Board of Commission meeting.
Any comments or questions? Any questions from the audience? Do we need to acknowledge your report or anything, or? With a motion?
No, actually, these are just recommendations at this time, and the way that the new open meetings laws, they require me to present them at one meeting, and then they can be acted on at the next.
Thank you. That completes our agenda. Do we have a creative motion of any kind?
A creative one?
Make a motion adjourned.
That's very creative.
Greatest I can get.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.